Good evening. Sorry for the delay. We had an extended executive session. The executive session of the Wayne Board of Education Public Work Session Meeting of May 6, 2021, was convened virtually and hosted in the Media Center of Anthony Wayne Middle School, 201 Garside Avenue, Wayne, New Jersey. The statement of compliance setting forth time, date, and location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, and the roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. Can I get a mover? Mr. Duffy, Mr. Giordano. Okay, if we could rise for a flag salute. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Let's get started with Dr. Toback.
Okay, so we're gonna combine the front end of the meeting and do Teacher Appreciation Week, Nurse Appreciation Week, Superintendent's Report, and H.O.A. Report, all in one. So, good evening, everyone. The Board of Education meeting is being held at Anthony Wayne Middle School. Again, other than for a handful of district employees, the meeting is largely a virtual meeting. This has been the case throughout the pandemic. The meeting is open for public view and public participation using Zoom. It's broadcast on Channel 77. Last week, Governor Murphy made a major announcement during his daily coronavirus updates, which lifted restrictions and increased the number of people who can gather indoors and outdoors while socially distanced. This included guidance for proms, graduations, and other end-of-school events. Details are still being worked out at the building levels for each of the schools. We'll make sure to communicate any updates for students and Wayne families, but a number of events that we were concerned about are going to go ahead. While COVID is still being reported in the district, we're thrilled to report that numbers have been declining steadily each week. Unfortunately, the change with our COVID outlook did not lead to some of the changes we had hoped for at the high school level. There's big discrepancies between attendance rates at each of the high schools. However, we have seen a major influx of students at the middle school and elementary level. At the elementary level, in some cases, classes are running at 100%. So there is progress, and we're happy to see that so many parents have determined to have their children returned to our school system. Well, there is some time. We'd like to start with bringing additional students back for our high schools, starting with the senior class. We'll be sending another format to parents with the goal of returning our seniors on June 2nd and doing a survey to determine the number of students interested in returning for instruction as well. We'll continue to evaluate attendance at the other grade levels and report back at the next meeting. Keep in mind that for schools in New Jersey, social distancing requirements remain, and that while these students are eating, we're required to maintain six feet of social distancing. We do have something that many schools do not have for secondary students, which is a full day of instruction with lunch. A quick playground update. All of our playground inspections have been completed, and we're happy to report that our school playgrounds will be open for after-school use beginning tomorrow, May 7th. There will be daily sanitizing, and students will be permitted to use the playgrounds under the supervision of their parents or guardians. We will start with reopening our playgrounds after school and consider opening them fully if future guidance makes that a feasible option. So, at this point, I'd like to turn things over to Mrs. Reichman to talk about Teacher Appreciation Week.
Good evening. This week, Teacher Appreciation Week, and another well-deserved opportunity to thank the teachers here in Wayne and everywhere and share our gratitude. This year, more than ever, we owe them our thanks for their unwavering dedication and commitment to our students and Wayne families. There are so many ways that our teachers went above and beyond this school year, and I'd like to highlight just a few. Flexibility. Our teachers had to make a quick shift to remote learning a little over a year ago. We quickly introduced new digital platforms, and they learned on the fly, as always, stepped up and exceeded our expectations. This challenge became even more difficult this year while teaching our in-person students and virtual students at the same time. Thank you for your ongoing flexibility. Creativity. Our teachers identified and learned the best new resources to keep students engaged and connected to the classroom and learning. Kindness. Our teachers have always demonstrated their kindness towards our students, but this past year, they took it to the next level. Whether gathering supplies to send home, reaching out to check in with students, and offer an extra level of support, or helping their colleagues through a very difficult time, the Wayne teachers showed their kindness and care for their students and each other in a way that has been touching and special. It's with great pleasure and pride that I recognize and congratulate all of our teachers for their dedication and contributions this past year. You showed us how strong you are, and your unwavering commitment is unmatched. Nurses. This week is also National Nurse Appreciation Week, and I wanted to recognize all of our school nurses. Our Wayne School nurses work alongside teachers, administrators, and counselors to support our community in many ways, both obvious and unseen. Since the outbreak of COVID-19, our school nurses have been collaborating around the clock on ways to support our students and families through this challenging time. Their efforts to monitor our daily health screener completion, facilitate contact tracing, and provide daily care for our students are just a few of the ways they go above and beyond to keep our students healthy and schools safe during these challenging times. Their ongoing commitment to our Wayne families is greatly appreciated, and we're so grateful for your dedication and care. At this time, we have a very special message for our teachers and nurses from our students. Dr. Burchard, can you please share that message?
What do you love about preschool? Michael, what do you love about preschool? You love playing puzzles? Awesome. And can you tell me what your names are? Are you Victor and Michael D'Agostino? And you come to the ECC? And you have Spider-Man shoes? Michael, and you? That's right, and you have jeans. Are you brothers? Awesome. Can you give each other a high five for the ECC and our awesome teachers? All right, can you say thank you?
Happy Nurse Day, Miss Breeding Day.
Happy Teacher Appreciation Day. I hope I appreciate everything that teachers do. I hope you have a good day, and thank you for all the teachers at Wayne School. Bye.
Thank you. I mean, thank you to all of our teachers who make learning so fun. Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. A.P.T. Rock.
Thank you, Nurse Silva, for doing everything for the school and taking care of everyone, making sure everyone's safe.
Thank you, Nurse Silva, for everything that you do for me and the school. Thank you for always taking care of everybody.
Hi, my name is Addison Barkley, and I am in third grade at James Fallon. All the students at James Fallon want to say a special thank you to all our teachers. Thank you for all you do.
My name is Mason May, and I am in first grade at James Fallon School. Thank you to all the teachers for teaching all the amazing.
Yay!
Hi, my name is Eddie Roden, and I am in first grade at James Fallon School, and I want to say a special thing. Thank you, Nurse Sharon, for taking such good care of us every day. Thank you!
I like how all the teachers are really open to answer any questions, and they're really nice. And they're good at explaining things, and they don't overload any homework, too. Happy Teacher Appreciation Week.
So they like help people to like understand reading and foundations and stuff, and art and music and librarians. They give everybody like a general thank you because the teacher works very hard. They did a very great work on everything to help students, and happy Teacher.
What I like about Ms. Tangwa is that she's really caring, and she's kind, and that she's like really nice whenever someone is injured or a little hurt. She's just very caring. Happy Nurse Day.
What makes JFK teachers so special is they're always nice to us. They make assignments fun, and they're very sweet, and we have so much fun doing all these things that they do.
Everyone has someone that they look up to, and it's likely that that person has taught you something. You don't need to have a teaching degree to be able to edify and enlighten, and you don't need to be a student to learn new things. And our teachers are the superheroes of JFK. They bring out the best in every student, and they inspire us and open up new doors for us every day. They prune our wayward branches and are the first to point out the fresh new shoots pointing to new directions. To quote Alexandra Trenfer, "The best teachers are those who show you where to look, but don't tell you what to seek." And in JFK, we've got so many awesome teachers, and I feel so much better knowing that our generation can be fortified with the gift of knowledge.
Our school nurse is so special.
She's sweet, she's caring, she's loving, and she's nice. And she also tells us to wear our masks and be safe.
Happy Teacher Appreciation Day. We students want to thank all the teachers that help us with learning.
Thank you for making learning fun for kids everywhere, all the time. Learning would not be what it is without you teachers.
You are very appreciated and loved by all Pakenex students in this school. Thank you.
School nurses are vital to all schools. Without them, I don't think schools would run the same way they do now. Mrs. Asagaz has been doing an amazing job being my school's new nurse. She is very kind and calm when scary situations happen. Thank you for being such a great school nurse, Mrs. Asagaz.
I'm thankful for all my amazing teachers. You have been an inspiration to me for these last six years. Every year, I look forward to the memories you will make together.
This year, I would like to thank all our wonderful teachers at Pine's Lake for helping us learn and grow. You have been with us through the good and bad times, and I'm grateful for your kindness and encouragement.
Thank you is not enough to show our gratitude for everything you do and mean to us.
Ms. Neplatano, you're an amazing nurse. You take care of all of us and show kindness and empathy. Your lessons teach us to live a healthy lifestyle and shape our future. Whenever I walk into your office, your smile and kindness make me feel all better.
Hi, teachers. I just want to say thank you for teaching us and all that you do in Randall Carter, and we love you.
Hi, nurses. I just want to say that you guys are in our hearts, and you will always be in Randall Carter's hearts. We love you so much. Thank you for being our nurses.
Hi, I'm Victoria Filoroffo.
And I'm Aliwi Zadi.
We want to thank you for teaching online and in class because we know it's a struggle for all the teachers.
And we are very thankful for the time you put into the students and the school. Also, I know this past year has been very rough.
Thank you so much for all you have done. Have a great rest of the year, our teachers.
Hi, my name is Felina Raiman, and I want to thank our school nurse, Ms. Rettrell, for helping our school feel better.
I'm Isabella Massa from class 5, and I just want to give a big thank you to our nurse and her putting all of her years on this school and helping others whenever. Thank you.
This school is great. I love all the teachers, and the teachers are the best here.
My name is Lisa Gaddison, and I'm going to tell you a few reasons why I like my teacher, Ms. Russ. One reason I like Ms. Russ is because she is always willing to help her students, and she always helps us learn at our own pace, and she helps us learn individually. Number two is because she always knows how to make her students feel better if they have a bad day, and she always does it by either cracking a couple of jokes or like talking to you, just making you feel better in general.
Mrs. Con, you're the best nurse in the whole wide world.
Here is a few reasons why I like Nurse Kelly. One reason is because she's always willing to help her students, and she always helps us feel better, and she does everything possible to make us feel better. Number two is that she's very kind-hearted, does her best at everything she does.
Anthony Wayne teachers are amazing. We love them so much. They make learning awesome.
The nurse at Anthony Wayne Middle School is so kind and keeps everyone healthy and safe.
Our GW teachers are the best. We know online learning was pretty hard, but you made it fun and interactive. The personal attention you gave us showed how much you care about each and every one of your students. Each time you checked in to see how you were doing meant so much to us. You inspired us to do our best and make us want to do better for ourselves and the world. We won't forget the in-class sessions and the time you spent with us. There are no greater teachers than the ones that we have here. Thank you for all you do.
Hey, GW, we know this year has been tough, but we are so grateful for our nurses here. You take so much time each day with our daily health screenings and always put in the extra effort to keep us healthy. You are prepared for any situation, and we know we can count on you to help us out. Your door is always open for us, and we cannot thank you enough for all you do for our school.
Thank you so much for everything you've done for us. We appreciate you.
We've learned a lot and felt supported.
We have so much appreciation for our nurse, Mrs. Sirikliano, who is there for us every day and helps us when we're hurt or whenever we need help.
Hello, my name is Jason Hook, and I'm a freshman here at Wayne Hills High School, and I would just like to shout out my history teacher, Mr. Levy. He inspires me a lot to learn more about the history around the world, so thank you.
Hello, I'm Sam. I'm a junior from Wayne Hills High School, and I'm here to tell you about the Wayne Hills Automotive Program. During the pandemic, it's been a little tough not being able to work on cars here and there, but Mr. Hopper's made it a pretty good experience. But then overall, even during all this virtual learning stuff, he's stayed persistent with programs such as dual enrollment to make sure that, once things do get back to normal, we can have different career paths and opportunities available to us right out of high school.
Hi, I'm Joe. I'm a junior here at Wayne Hills, and I'm part of the Wayne Automotive Program. And overall, the program's just a really great program taught by Mr. Hopper. He's a great teacher. He always keeps the class like lighthearted, and he always knows how to make the information easy to understand. Recently, we took our ASE exams, and we were able to actually do really good on those because Mr. Hopper just does a great job as a teacher.
Hi, my name is Mike Frennicole. I'm a sophomore at Wayne Hills, and I'm here to talk about Mr. Hook straight because this year, he really helped me out and all the fun projects that we did in the class. And he really helped me learn how to edit really well. I'm only a TV one student.
Hi, my name is Carolina, and I'm a senior at Wayne Hills High School. I would like to thank Mrs. King for always being a great role model to me during my four years. She has always given me guidance and kindness, and that is something that I will miss when I go off to college.
A teacher is like spring who nurtures new green sprouts, encourages and leads them whenever they have doubts. A teacher is like summer with sunny temperament, makes studying a pleasure, preventing discontent.
A teacher is like thought with methods, crisp and clear lessons of bright colors and a happy atmosphere.
A teacher is like winter, while it's snowing hard outside, keeping students comfortable as a warm and helpful guide.
Teacher, you do all these things with a pleasant attitude. You're a teacher for all seasons, and you have my gratitude.
Putting on bandages, stopping a bloody nose, holding on to ice packs, giving out heated clothes, tirelessly healing all day long just to make sure that nothing goes wrong. Our children are safer because of you. Thank you, school nurse, for all that you do.
That was a wonderful tribute. Thank you, Mrs. Reichman.
So I'd also like to join our students in saying thank you to all of our teachers and nurses. To further celebrate, this video will be posted on our website and social media channels tomorrow and also be distributed to all of our teachers and our nurses. Okay. So tonight, we're very proud to announce our valedictorians and salutatorians from both of our high schools. So in the coming weeks and the coming board meetings, we'll be spending more time talking about our graduating class. And let's get started with Wayne Hills Valedictorian, Manute Singh. Congratulations to Manute Singh. He's a student with phenomenal grades, impressive test scores, and achievements that jump off the page. Due to his academic success, he's been able to achieve. He's had the opportunity to engage in many wonderful academic experiences, such as the Governor's School and the Columbia Science Honors Program. In regard to athletics, Manute is featured on the News 12 New Jersey Scholar-Athlete of the Week program this past fall for his skills and abilities in the classroom, as well as on the soccer field. In addition to being an exceptional student and athlete, Manute is also a genuine and kind person. The degree of humanity that Manute has displayed throughout his high school years is truly admirable. This fall, Manute will be studying the Physician-Scientist Program at Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute. Wayne Hills Salutatorian, Jessie Liu. Congratulations to Jessie Liu. She's a person with a hard-working and persistent character who regularly has a smile on her face. She's an outstanding student, having completed 16 honors or AP classes during her first three years of high school, and she's currently enrolled in seven more such classes as a senior. She has a passion for science and researches with a chemistry professor at the New Jersey Institute of Technology. From a career perspective, Jessie's dream opportunity would be to couple her love of the sciences with her love of helping others. She was also a varsity player on the Wayne Hills Girls Tennis Team as co-president of a model United Nations organization. Outside of the academic environment, Jessie is actively involved in the community, serving as a member of the Children Medical Center Junior Fundraising Board and volunteering as a STEM and English tutor for local and international elementary school students. Jessie will be pursuing her diverse interests and aptitudes at the University of Virginia this fall. Wayne Valley. Congratulations to Wayne Valley High School Valedictorian, James June. James will be attending Princeton University this fall, studying molecular biology and theology. Through diligence and good habits, he found success in the classroom, excelling in science classes like AP Chemistry, Biology, and Psychology, while also enjoying others like AP Language and Music Theory. Apart from studying, James was a passionate athlete and played for the football team all four years at Valley, earning varsity letters as a sophomore and a starting spot as a junior and team captain and honors as a senior. James' love for the game and pride in the school showed on and off the field. Most important to James is his faith, which influenced many of his core values and fueled much of his community service. James served on his church worship team from sixth grade through senior, eventually becoming the worship leader, the music director of the youth group as a sophomore. He also volunteered at numerous children's ministry events and organized annual summer camps in Mexico for children of impoverished villages. Now on to the Wayne Valley Salutatorians, someone we know well, Gina Fermi. Congratulations to Gina. She'll be attending Williams College in the fall, where she hopes to study international relations and anthropology. Gina was selected for a National Security Language Initiative Scholarship from the U.S. Department of State, where she studied the Russian language in Moscow in the summer of 2019. She's also been involved with the Stanford Program on International and Cross-Cultural Education, studying in the highly competitive Sejong-Korean Scholars Program and China Scholars Program, as well as contributing to their project, What Does It Mean to Be an American? For the past two years, Gina has served as a student liaison to the Board of Education in 2019 for a presentation to the Board of Ed entitled Student Exchange Programs and the Globalization of Education. She won an International Education Week Award from the Russian-American Foundation. Inspired by her time at Board of Ed meetings, Gina applied for and was selected to the Harvard Graduate School of Education Making-Caring Common Projects Youth Advisory Board. Gina is also editor-in-chief of the school newspaper, president of the Student Dance Association, and historian of the National Arts Society. She's a go-to leader for positive change in her school community and was voted most likely to succeed and most likely to be president by her classmates. She's a National Merit Commended Student, AP Scholar with Distinction. As for her personal interests, Gina enjoys watching East Asian films, writing comedy bits, reading philosophy texts, and attempting the New Yorker Caption Contest. So, in a little bit, we're going to talk more about our budget. What I'd like to do is, before we get to that, talk about an update on our diversity, equity, and inclusion goal. So next week, we'll be running a thought exchange to gather feedback from the Wayne Valley school community about the school mascot. Wayne Valley students, parents, and alumni will be invited to participate, incoming freshmen students, and parents will also have the opportunity to join the exchange and share their thoughts. This process is the last part of our district goal work for this year, and a full report detailing each area of operation that was evaluated as part of this goal will be shared out in the presentation at our June Board of Education meeting. Finally, the H.I.B. report. I'm reporting the following data related to harassment, intimidation, bullying incident in Wayne County Public School District. There were two incidents investigated since my last report, and neither of those cases were deemed to be actual cases of H.I.B. It's a lengthy report, but a very good report for the district. Lot going on.
Lot going on. Mr. Geppert, you have a statement to read from the board to tag on to the superintendent's report.
The Wayne Board of Education has been served with a complaint filed by Dennis Carroll, Secretary of the Wayne Education Association, alleging that he was defamed by the Board of Education and Robert Blanchard based on comments made by Mr. Blanchard, our interim director of facilities, at a board meeting on September 10, 2020. Both Robert Blanchard and the board have acted professionally and appropriately at all times with respect to the subject matter of the lawsuit. The board looks forward to the opportunity to present the board's evidence in a court of law.
Thank you, Mr. Geppert. Now we'll move on to the final hearing on our 2021-22 school budget. Mr. Moffett.
Thank you, Mrs. Kazan. Mr. Dr. Burchard, could you queue up the presentation, please?
Hello and welcome to the public hearing on the 2021-2022 school budget. This public hearing is a requirement to adopt and approve the district tax levy for 2021-22 school year and can be found on this evening's agenda under Emergent section in its V, Emergent School Resource. So V2 would be the corresponding resolution. The subject budget was submitted to the New Jersey Department of Education County Office. It was approved by the county office as presented with no changes. That allowed us to advertise ahead of this meeting. I'd also like to provide a short overview of the overall budget and definitely the process of creating this budget for tonight. As some have seen in prior presentations related to the budget, the Board of Education has a three-year plan that administration has been following to phase in a full-day kindergarten. That three-year plan included renovations to Preakness School for the Early Childhood Center. It also included staffing as it relates to administration for the new building and early childhood center, as well as in the third year, which is this year, meaning this budget year, was to fully implement kindergarten and provide for teachers. Again, it was scaling up from a part-time program to a full-time program, which is basically doubling the size. So that was done as part of the third year as this budget, so we're very proud to present the budget to include the kindergarten on behalf of the board's planning over the past three years. Another big component of the budget was to plan for three units, to negotiate contracts, so that was a big part of covering salary costs. And the all-encompassing COVID-19 pandemic, which you have to also view in a three-year phase, if you can look at it. The pandemic started in the 2019-2020 fiscal year. It's continued this year, which is the 2021 school year, and really affects the 2021-22 budget year, which again is tonight's budget. So it really, the pandemic spans actually three budget years, when you think about it, which presented a pretty big challenge for my staff and others at the administrative levels because you have to worry about the base of your budget because 1920, you potentially have spent a little less maybe in certain categories, a little bit more, and you had to project into 2021, meaning 2021, and then you have to worry about having the correct base again in the 21-22 fiscal year. So that was a pretty big challenge for us. So that was a, that was a pretty big challenge for us. On top of the base worries that we had, we also didn't know, and we still don't know as of today, what our opening in September will look like. We don't know how our school settings will look like, meaning our classrooms will look like, nor do we know what conditions we'll be opening under, as far as any type of restrictions in social distancing and/or additional supplies and material. So those are the unknowns, and that was a big part of how we created the budget for On this slide, you'll see our 2021-2022 budgeted revenues. The first line you can see is tax levy. On the far right is the change from year to year. And again, this is in regard to the 2021-2022 against the adjusted 2021 budget. As you can see, the tax levy is at $4.2 million. It represents roughly 2.68% increase. Again, this is the tax levy, which is directly tied to your property taxes. The next line down is state aid. As you may have read in the newspapers in the past, the state of New Jersey has committed itself to continuing to get back to a formula that was court-approved. We've benefited over the last few years from that effort by the state of New Jersey. This year, it represents roughly 22.3% increase, or $1,003,000 in total increase in state aid. Extraordinary aid, which is also an aid classification program from the state of New Jersey, which offsets special ed costs directly. We had a little drop-off this year, and it really relates to how we budget for extraordinary aid. Unfortunately, extraordinary aid figures are not released by the state of New Jersey until the end of June, early July, so we really don't know those amounts from year to year until really the end of the year. But we anticipate a minor reduction of that as far as about $300,000, which is a decrease of 10%. Medicated semi, again, a little drop-off there, about $13,000 with state, which would be other revenue is relatively flat. We anticipate the same level of miscellaneous revenue to be coming in as in the past. To continue with revenues, budgeted revenues for 21-22, you can see here a row for fund balance, the use of fund balance will be using $1,750,000 as a form of tax relief. So these are funds available from the 2021 budget that are left and available at the end of the school year, or I should say fiscal year, and we utilize that for this year's budget, which is again at 21-22. So as I said, it's a form of tax relief, and it's available from the funds at the end of the year. Capital Reserve is also a form of tax relief. The district has built a capital reserve over time, and it's an account where you can add and withdraw, or I should say deposit and withdraw. In this year's budget, we're going to utilize $1.2 million as a withdrawal for our budget, so this will help offset the costs related to capital projects. As you can see down that column for 21-22, the total budget, again, it's an operating budget, is about $174 million, which is an increase of about $5 million, or 3%. On this slide, you'll see revenues as a form of a pie chart. Again, this is all the 21-22 school budget. It may be a little hard to read, but you'll see in the orange space is really the largest portion, which is almost 92%, which is the tax levy. So 92% of our total revenue for the operating budget comes from the tax levy. The second-largest category of revenue would be state aid, which comes in about 4.2%. We have about 1% coming in from the fund balance. Again, that was a form of tax relief. Miscellaneous revenue is about $1,006,000. Again, that's at red areas, so the state aid was the light blue. Fund balance is a little bit of the purple. Red is the miscellaneous revenue, 1.6 again. Federal aid is less than a percent, and you have capital reserve at a little under 1% as well. Again, that's the cap reserve, that's from an account really outside the budget that we use as, we withdraw funds to offset capital projects in our current budget, which would be the 21-22 school year. And then there's a little sliver of tuition and rents. This slide reflects expenditures for 21-22 against the 2021 school year, which is the current year. I did want to point out that COVID-19, the pandemic, has caused the base to have to be reviewed quite extensively with a lot of things going on this year that were very difficult to kind of plan. So we took some extra effort to go through to make sure we accounted for everything in what we consider to be our base, which is the 2021 school year, that base. So there are a lot of things that happened or didn't happen in 2021 due to COVID that we had to adjust for. So the first line you can see is instruction and special education is the second one. That's, as you can see, the largest portion of this slide, but it includes the salary of all the teaching staff, as well as a certain support staff, special education area as well, and supplies and professional services. So instruction, as you can see on the right-hand side, is the change from year to year. Again, our adjusted budget to our final budget that we anticipate for next year is up about 1.2%, which is normally some of the things that are underfoot. It has to do with staff turnover and the change in retirements and how they're being filled. Special education is up by 3.3%, which is pretty flat, as I can say. Special education is one of these areas that has a continued trend over the years. We try to control costs, but again, these are special education services that are provided by IEP, so these are needed educational services. The second, I should say, the third line, really flat from year to year, and these are just professional development activities for the district. Other programs, again, relatively flat. These are similar programs, like summer programs, and that's like 7%, but really it's only $22,000 from year to year. General administration, again, some turnover, some adjustments, but relatively flat from year to year. School administration, these would be covered by the school-level budgets, so there is a slight decline. There is some turnover at work from year to year. Central administration, what I would consider to be relatively flat. And then technology seems to be dropping, although it has mainly to do with a lease purchase agreement payment dropping off, meaning that payment for technology that was acquired through a lease purchase agreement one year ended. So there's a little bit of a drop-off there. This slide is a continuation of the comparison and expenditures or appropriations from year to year. What I would like to point out on this slide is that, as you see, the first two are student activities and clubs and student athletics. These are two areas that were disrupted due to the COVID-19 pandemic. So we took some extra time to make sure we had the base, an appropriate base, to utilize into future projections. So when we looked back at 2021, we did have something that was a one-time expense within that number, and that didn't cause most of the decrease from year to year. And that had to do with the decision by the Board to refund parents related to DC trips not taken, so, which affected the 2021 school year. So you have about an estimated $60,000 covering on a budgetary basis all those reimbursements, which was the artificial bump for 2021. So that $97,000, if the decision was not to move forward, that would probably be around $37,000 decrease, which is somewhat normal. Student athletics is in a similar situation, in the sense that it was a major disruption. And not only is it a disruption, we had to make sure we had enough funds available for referees and cover some increases. But mainly, we went back to make sure that we covered everything based on the 1920s, so we built that up to make sure by about $260,000 to cover everything as related with the idea that the 2021 school year was disrupted. We did, we do feel that amount is more than enough to accommodate that, as well as, so the majority, like I'm saying, about $260,000 of that 380 was due to making sure the base was accurate. And it also covers an increase in some professional services that we're going to acquire, as well as an increase in student and athlete insurance. Moving on to the next section, which is attendance, nursing, immediate guidance, that's a normal increase, about 3.5%. Again, probably mainly just an increase in salaries. Facilities, again, that's relatively flat in my book, but it should cover all the increasing energy costs that we anticipate, but that's the biggest concern we have in facilities at this point. But I would think that's just a minor increase of 2.7. Transportation, it's also an area that we had to look at. There were some issues that related to athletic trips that we had to accommodate, so we feel that 509 for this coming year would be enough to cover that and increases in fuel and those type of things. And then that leaves employee benefits. Overall, as employee benefits includes various payouts, but specifically dental and healthcare coverage. The biggest issue in 2021 to 21-22, and in the base, has to do with the removal of the difference card. The decision to move forward with a new carrier without the difference card really had a negative impact, meaning it offset the increase. So we used about 12,000, I should say, 12% increase for our insurance, meaning health insurance. Because we lost the difference card, we decided not to move forward that, that was actually a negative adjustment, so it offset that 12% increase. So the net impact across all lines that were in the employee benefit category, it only increased by the 1.2% or basically, you know, 3.4%. So that was a major change from year to year, which was how we covered health insurance for our employees. And again, it was without the difference card moving forward. This slide is a continuation of expenditures and appropriations from year to year. We have three lines here in front of you. You see food services, that was adjusted up by $150,000, which has to do with a potential loss again for next year. We anticipate using $150,000 to cover any type of loss at beginning of the year in our food service, and that's consistent to what we currently see unfolding, not only in 2021, but also what we project. Charter schools, and this number is provided by the Department of Education. We do have a couple of students attending a charter school, and we're required to budget for that, that expense or appropriation. So it's basically the amount of money that Wayne Township Public Schools transfers to that individual charter school for those students. Capital outlay, which is pretty interesting, it kind of dropped down. You see it go from 569 down to the 1.3 or 1.4 million, which is really from year to year, capital outlay does change, and it usually is related to one-time expenditures. But we had more in capital outlay in 2021, but as some may remember, the Department of Education over the summer, last summer, after we approved the budget, reduced our state aid amount by about $625,000, so we had to reduce that to offset the reduction in state aid. So that's kind of, kind of doesn't really reflect the true amount that we started off with in 2021. So that would drop that $800,000 significantly, but really, again, like I said, it's mainly projects that we have funded. Again, capital outlay, a majority of these projects, just like they were last year, you have $1,002,000 of that $1,003,000, which is covered by what they consider a withdrawal from capital reserve. Again, and I'll probably speak about it a couple of times during this presentation. Capital reserve are funds that we have in a reserve that is available for use for capital projects, so we pull that in during the budget period, so we don't have to offset this with an increase in the general fund tax levy. So it's kind of the tax relief, and that is in play when you talk about capital outlay from year to year, and that does support the 1.2 million of the 1.4 million in capital outlay. So that brings us to a total general fund expenditure appropriation for next year of $174 million, which is roughly $5 million increase, which represents a growth of 3%. Remember, this all includes the kindergarten expansion, as well as our normal increases This slide is basically a pie chart regarding all the appropriations, as we covered in the prior three slides. So it just groups them into general categories. So you see academic programs, meaning 50%, employee benefits at 22. So those are the largest two components of the appropriations. And then as you see, you have student transportation for 4%, facilities 9, administration 5, and As a budget summary, the general fund or operating budget of the 2021-2022 school year is roughly $174 million, which has an increase of $5 million, which represents a 3% growth from year to year. School tax levy of $159 million, a little over $159 million, which utilizes a bank cap of $1,56,646, brings the total tax levy up from year to year to about $4 million, which represents about a 2.68% growth, and that growth is about $124 a year. I would also like to note that this year's budget, the 2021-2022 budget, uses a $1,750,000 budgeted fund balance, which is used as a form of tax relief. The cost of the full-day kindergarten program moving from a halftime basis to full-time program is estimated to be $1.7 million. That is inclusive of 15 full-time teachers, which includes salaries and benefits, 15 classroom instructional aides, lunch monitors, additional furniture for all program needs, instruction materials again for all program needs, professional development also for incoming teachers, so they're ready to go on September 1. Again, total estimated budget of $1.7 million. Initiatives included in our general fund budget will include the continuation of Envision Math, Schoolwide Literacy, National Geographic, and Amplify Science programs, and the all-important related digital subscriptions. Funds will be available for online learning assessment digital subscriptions. We'll continue with LinkedIn data warehousing and assessment system and associated professional development. We'll be acquiring two new textbook series. The first is in art history at the high school level. The second is AP History. We'll also have funds available for the continuation of the diversity and equity and inclusion goal and the related professional development training program, and of course, the Phase Three of the Full-Day Kindergarten Program. Initiatives included in the budget by way of a lease purchase arrangement through PCIA, and an estimated amount of $1.5 million would include a telephone system phase- and an estimated amount of $1.5 million would include a telephone system phase two upgrade at $250,000 estimated, the continuation of the district's one-to-one computer program in the amount of $738,000, which would cover the following four grades, the first grade, again, that's district wide, fifth, sixth, and ninth grades. Also included in the lease purchase would be two special need school vans, which would be equipped with wheelchair lifts at $88,000 each. That comes in about $176,000. Three new 24 passenger vans at $234,000 and one new and two used facility vehicles, most likely two used vans and one new pickup truck. A withdrawal from capital reserve in the amount of $1.2 million will allow the district to implement backup generator program, which is a multi-year program addressing some critical needs that we have. The three areas that will start with Spines Lake Elementary School, that project as part of the overall program is estimated at $530,000. And that will allow us to maintain in the event of a powder outage, a fire alarm system, lighting, refrigeration, and IT function. So we'll keep them up and running as well as keeping the heating and ventilation system operational. Second area has to do with our transportation department. We have a location at the North Cove. That project is estimated to be $270,000. That again, critical infrastructure is communication and pumps. Again, these are water pumps at the site and obviously communications are for vehicles and dispatch. And it'll be portable and flexible enough for district wide use. The second location in transportation is our bus garage, which is estimated to be a project of $360,000. And the infrastructure there we're concerned about is maintaining communications with our vehicles. Again, communications from driver to main office. I want to make sure the alarms are maintained. And again, we also want to maintain our IT functions and communication software. Part of that bus garage plan is also to address mechanical repair equipment to make sure it's operational in a power outage. This slide reflects the use of bank cap. This budget being presented tonight includes a use of bank cap of over $1 million. As you can see on the left side under 1819, we've used the bank cap in the past in the amount of $323,000 in 1819. We generated cap, as they say, in 1920, and we generated that cap, which is unutilized tax authority of over $1 million due to increase in health costs in that fiscal year. And that is able to be carried forward a number of years. We decided to utilize it in the 2122 budget to offset not only increased and anticipated health insurance costs for employees, but also a loss of revenue related to the implementation of chapter 44. As you may have seen in a prior slides that we've used at a board meeting, I reported out that we anticipated about a loss of $350,000 due to the implementation of chapter 44 in the 2021 school year. And we projected out a little over double that amount for the school year, or should say fiscal year 2122 of about $750,000 at this point in time without knowing the impact of the further implementation of chapter 44, specifically the introduction to a new plan, which is the Garden State Plan. We don't know how that's going to impact our estimates at this point. And we don't know the impact of an open enrollment that we have set for July 1, 2021. These are all areas that will have an impact on our, some of our projections. And it could indicate that the $750,000 that we anticipated might actually be greater than what we expected. So again, this is a bank cap that we're utilizing in the budget that's being presented today. This slide reflects the budget being considered tonight, at least operating budget in salary and non-salary portions. So it's very important to understand it because from time to time, the administration hears how potentially easy it is to reduce the budget, but it really does deal with a lot of salaries and people rather than areas that the district really truly has control over, which are non-salary items. But if you look at it, you're looking at 58% for salaries and 22% benefits. So right there, you're at 80%. So all you have left is the little slivers, the purple and the green to come up with the difference. So when you start to think that it's, it's easy, it really isn't because you would really be looking at maybe the 14% and at least a portion of that. Because normally, special education is stuff that, services that would be required by the IAP. So you probably wouldn't find a lot there, but the 14% is really maybe in play. But even then, you could probably argue that energy and facility costs can't be that easily reduced. So it's just a different way to look at it. Again, it's comparing salaries against non-salary groupings. Two big federal programs are ESSA and IDEA. The first one is ESSA, which is Every Student Succeeds Act. Again, this is federal funds that the district receives for various program and professional development activities. So the resources here have been estimated at about $663,000. Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, which is again, an entitlement grant that's focused on needs of special education students. We have about $1.2 million in funds for that. And majority of those funds go to student tuitions for, in this case, out of district special education students. Again, these are the two largest federal aid categories and programs that we have in our budget. The final section of our district budget is debt service area, which includes a principal and interest payment for debt incurred from a project at Anthony Wayne Middle School. This project was approved through a referendum and respective tax levy amount was approved. That obligation runs out, that financial obligation runs out to 2324 fiscal year. Again, it's a P and I payment debt service in total for 2122 is $2.9 million. And again, that tax levy has been previously approved by the voters and flows through our district budget. The district continues to improve their financial position. As you can see on this chart, over the past several years, we've maintained a healthy surplus position at about 2.0% of our total expenses. Capital reserve has been built over the same time period to about $6.8 million. What's so important about the capital reserve is we can utilize those funds to pay for maintenance and/or capital projects without having to build them into our operating budget year after year. So this is a form of tax relief. So we don't have to raise those taxes moving forward. We have this reserve to help us with those expenditures. Some of the assistance that reserve has helped the district is by helping renovate the early childhood center at the Preakness Schools, as well as allowing the district to re-turf two of their fields at the high schools. Again, that was money raised through the capital reserve. So we had that money, therefore, we didn't have to add that to our normal operating budget. Another form of tax relief, you have capital reserve on one hand. On the other hand, you have more of a direct correlation to the future budget. Has to do with the budgeted fund balance. We've had a pretty large position in the past. And as you can see in 2016, we're at about 3 million. We're slowly trying to reduce it over time. We're down to about $1,750,000. Again, this is tax relief. It goes directly to the future budget and we do not have to raise that amount in that year. So next year, we have to raise a tax levy of less than this $1,750. If we did not have money available at the end of the school year, we would then have to collect those taxes at 1.750,000 in this year's budget. Again, these are all positive conditions that help us better manage the district. This is the calculation, the tax levies, more detailed breakout of how we come about an estimate. As you can see on the bottom, we have a yellow highlight which identifies the average assessed value. Again, that average assessed value is provided by the town, the municipality. So that average assessed is 229,309 assessed, which would indicate an annual increase from this budget of $124. And that just shows you along that yellow line, the current 2021 as opposed to the proposed amount, which would be in 2022. And you see the increase of 124. What I would like to point out is that this is really based on net evaluations. As you can see, the orange area in the middle staying relatively stable. What would have an impact on the tax rate would be any type of increase or decrease. An increase in the value, and I should say, net evaluations would have a, would kind of reduce the amount and the lower amount would increase it. But right now, the evaluations are relatively stable and the calculation of this budget reflects 124. We'll move on to the next slide to give you more detail as it relates to an annual increase broken out over months and days. As you see here, you have the, again, the assessed value at 229,309 is average assessed. Annual amount is 124. If you break that out over a monthly basis, it's $10.37 and the daily rate is 34 cents a day. Please note that this is just strictly the increase due to the school district budget. Does not include the municipal or county levies at all. It's just strictly on this budget, the school district's budget. What's next in the budget process? If adopted tonight, the budget will be finalized with the New Jersey Department of Education County Office. Information will be sent to the Township of Wayne. Specifically, the tax levy will be certified. That in conjunction with the municipality and the county tax levies will be used for the calculation of real estate taxes for the coming year. By mid-May, the budget will be open for district use. Users will be able to enter acquisitions. Purchase orders will be processed and orders will be placed with the idea that we receive structural material when we open in September. There's a small little note I'd like to place on us tonight. The budget is subject to change in the event the state of New Jersey does change the state aid figures, although I do not anticipate it at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. Open to the board now. Questions? Anyone? This is Albinis.
Thank you. Thank you. First of all, thank you, Mr. Moffett and to your team. I know this is a tremendous amount of work, a difficult process, and I want to thank you for all of the hard work. I do have some questions based on, obviously, a lot of conversation and a lot of information discussion that the board has had. Just some, some general information for, for maybe my edification. It appears that we've received $2.3 million in aid between state and federal authorities for COVID expenses. We're looking at an additional payment coming from the $1.9 trillion COVID relief package. I realize at this point, we don't know what that number might be. We do know that New Jersey's received $2.7 billion for school assistance alone. So it would appear that our portion reasonably appears to be in the millions of dollars. There's a pretty significant list that the aid can be used to offset, such as personal protective equipment, sanitizer, spraying, shields, tents, remedial education, or additional assistance for students who might need it due to virtual learning, as well as a host of mental health and wellness concerns. So while the money isn't general operating funds, if the money can be used for those additional items, then it wouldn't need to come from our general operating funds. Based on, based on that information, as well as some additional good information that we have based on budgeted numbers compared to actual, I am continuing to be concerned with the use of bank cap in additional taxing authority to stakeholders, taxpayers during a time of a pandemic where people have been hurt financially, emotionally, perhaps even with loss. And, and I'm concerned that we're continuing to include bank cap in the budget. And to say to our 2%, we'll continue to move us forward on our full day kindergarten track based on the last three years of information we've been given for budgeting purposes. So I, I still continue to have a concern about taxing, putting additional tax burden on taxpayers for over an additional $1 million over the 2% cap. So I just want to, you know, kind of put some numbers out there, tell you my concerns and that the bank cap continues to concern me for the budget. Thank you. But again, I want to thank you for all the hard work because I know there's a lot of time that goes into putting all this together. So thank you for that.
Mr. Moffett, do you happen to know what our PCTI tuition cost would be for next year?
I don't have them off the top of my head. I could get them to you, but I could tell you they did go up. It's safe to say.
And we have four bargaining units under this year, correct? For salaries, we could have salary increases?
Correct.
Okay. That's it for right now.
Madam President, if I could? I don't know if you can hear me. I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, I was on mute talking as usual, but you go right ahead.
All right. My question is for Mr. Moffett here. I'm not really sure. I thought I was writing down as fast as I could. We're talking about a savings of $124 per household if we do not use bank cap?
To answer your, your question, the 124 represents the increase for this year. So the net increase is $124. If, if the discussion was to reduce it by the amount estimated, the same number as bank cap, it's about, without that, it's about $103. So the difference from the two numbers is about $21. It would be generated by that change.
So there's a $21 savings if we don't use our bank cap, correct?
If the tax levy decreased by that amount, yes, that's an estimate.
Okay. So we're talking about five trips to Starbucks or a steak dinner for our family if we don't use bank cap. On top of that, if we don't use it, we're talking about possibly eliminating the equity and inclusion program that we've heard so much about, could be eliminated. And I'm sorry, but I would rather spend $120 and have our school system be at the top of the state as they are rather than not. I'm sorry, but I, I can't agree with not passing this budget forward. I agree, we move this budget forward.
Mr. Pavlak.
All right. The bottom line is you could cut a million dollars out of this budget and not one program or anything else would be affected. and not one program or anything else would be affected. Bottom line. All right. So we need to, you know, we keep saying all-day kindergarten. All-day kindergarten is paid for in this budget. You cut a million dollars out of this budget, all-day kindergarten's there. It's not going to affect one student in this budget. All right. So, and yeah, it's only twenty dollars. It's twenty dollars this year. It was twenty dollars the year before and twenty dollars the year before. All right. You got one point three million dollars more in state aid. Okay? So you went up over and above the one point three. The one point three itself pretty much paid for all-day kindergarten, right there in state aid. Secondly, let's look at the amount of breakage that you have on tonight's agenda. With the amount of people that are retiring, there's one person retiring at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That person's being replaced at fifty-three thousand dollars. You have another person on the agenda who's retiring at a hundred and twenty thousand, being replaced by somebody for eighty thousand. Right there is substantial money. Okay? So to say a million dollars is going to take programs away, I think that's, that's very, I, I, I don't even know what to say about that. But it's not going to happen, folks. It's not going to happen. There's a lot, I have a lot of philosophical issues with this budget. All right? There, we, the amount of federal aid we've gotten so far, the amount of federal aid we're going to get, I get it. It's one-time expenses. But there's a lot there. We just had a contract that came in tonight substantially under what we anticipated. All right. So to keep saying, oh, you know, if you take this away, this is going to happen? No, it's not. No, it's not. And so if you want to sit down with me, I'll show you right how and why it's not. Honestly, with the amount of information we received tonight, there is no way I have enough information to support this budget right now. This budget should be put off to next week, have a special meeting, deal with the budget, and the budget alone, there's still a ton of questions out there. It doesn't have to be passed tonight. It needs to be passed by next Friday. And if anybody doesn't believe that, contact New Jersey School Boards. They'll be happy to tell you. But I, I have philosophical concerns over this, and I can tell you, this would be the first, if it's voted on tonight, this would be the first budget in sixteen years that I'm not supporting.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Well, I'll be the wrap-up on this. Oh, do you have your hand up, Mrs. Pettit?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Please, someone correct me if I'm wrong. I know we talked about the monies that would be coming in from the federal government. But as far as I understood, those monies are encumbered. I mean, if it's for PPE and dividers between desks or items like that, that's where the money has to be spent. It's not like we can say, oh, they're giving us an extra one and a half million dollars. Why don't we use it for all-day kindergarten? Because we can't. The other concern I have is, yes, we got some good number information tonight, but we still went from chapter seventy-five to chapter forty-four, which has had an impact, impact on our budget in a negative way. I understand Mr. Pavlak's point. I think Mr. Moffett and his team have done a terrific job of doing their due diligence on our budget. But the bottom line is, we could say, oh, there's a million dollars in there that we could spend, and it would not affect all-day kindergarten. Well, this town deserves all-day kindergarten. Their children deserve all-day kindergarten, especially in light of the last year and a half. They need to get that leg up with their education, just as our students that are already in school will need remediation. And at this point, I don't think we're quite sure how much that's going to cost. We may have to add extra staff for that. There are all sorts of things we can't really project. Due diligence on the budget is really making educated guesses in some areas. So I don't think that we serve our public by backing off on voting for this budget with the bank cap. Thank you.
Mr. Bubba? Sorry.
Okay. One of the things I'm really getting tired of hearing about is kindergarten. Three years ago, we sat down, a plan was given to us that if we went to two percent for the next three years, kindergarten will be covered. How is today that changed? We did that. We went to the two percent each year. We have the money for kindergarten. We're not, we are not going to not have kindergarten, just like we're not going to have other programs for a million dollars in this budget. But honestly, I don't believe it's necessary. And at this point, we got numbers tonight on something we're supposed to vote for. It, it doesn't, really, the timeline doesn't really work. But besides that, kindergarten has to stop, and the argument has to stop about kindergarten, because we did what we were supposed to do. The money's been budgeted. We also budgeted for those negotiating that we, that we have to do, because that was already included in the budget, as we learned today. This point, honestly, I think the one point two million dollars is not necessary, but I think it's a money grab at this point. We don't need it. It's not going to affect anything. And I realize that it may only be one steak dinner at home, or it may only be five trips to Starbucks, but maybe a taxpayer in this town would rather do that than pay their, than pay it towards their taxes, because maybe they want to use the money for themselves. Or for the taxpayer who is hurting, that may be an issue. I just, I'm having a hard time with it. So tonight, I will not support this budget.
I'm sorry. If I could, I have a hard time believing that any taxpayer in this city, in this town, that has a child would rather have the money for Starbucks or a steak dinner than put it to their child's education. Period, the end, and that's what we're here for. Period, the end.
Mr. Duffy, I'm sorry.
I couldn't disagree with that more. Oh, no, no.
I'm not calling on anybody. You were done.
He jumped in. He jumped into talk. Now it's my turn. I'm sorry that you feel that nobody's going to do that.
Did I stop chairing this meeting? I'm sorry. I didn't recognize him, and now I'm not recognizing you. You were finished. He was out of order. He was out of order. I didn't unmute fast enough. Now, if you kindly let me run the meeting, I'd appreciate it. Mrs. Kumar, you had your hand.
Hi. Um, thank you. So my, as we've been looking at the budget, the one big thing that I've been reading about and really looking towards is the chapter seventy-eight versus chapter forty-four, and that's my biggest budgetary concern. So keeping that in mind, and beyond that, looking at, yeah, we have our bargaining units that are coming up. And we also already put the money out for the PPE right now. We have to pay those bills now. We can't necessarily wait for the federal aid. So those are the things that I think about it as far as we're looking at this budget. And, um, correct me if I'm wrong, we have not gone above our cap in the past few years. Mr. Moffett.
That one slide on the bank cap is, is an indication that we, we had a taxing authority in nineteen twenty. We, we did not utilize it. That's all eligible to be used. As per legislation, it had changed and moved the November, I mean, the April election to the November election. The understanding was if the board decided to do that, you would be eligible to use the two percent plus all adjustments. So you would get an adjustment for a potential increase in healthcare costs in, in that year, as well as enrollment growth. Those are the two main adjustments. If you did not use those in those years, you could generate it, and that would be part of your, within the acceptable cap requirements year to year. So yes, to answer your question, bank cap is a residual amount of money that was not utilized in the past.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Giordano.
I'll try to make this short and sweet. We are asking for an extra million dollars of cushion. I think, listening to the, and I'm the last person to speak other than Ms., Ms. Kazan, I think we know where this vote's going to land. But I want to be the person who comes up publicly and says, our job as board members is first and foremost to protect our students, to protect our children. That's one with a bullet. Number two is to protect the taxpayers of this town. We are not professional politicians who take tax money and run with it. Mr. Moffett put together an excellent presentation. It was cautious. It was smart, and he worked with the data that he had at the time. Quite frankly, the data has changed, and the cushion does not need to be there. And I can't support, at this point, the way the budget's sitting right now. I think we should reconvene sometime in the very near future before the dates do, and really have a sit-down about this. I'm seeing too many people here who are using fear tactics about, oh, my God, something's going to go. Oh, my God, somebody's going to lose. Oh, my God, the children are going to be affected. If I thought for a second that any of these children were denied a penny of what they deserve in this town, I would vote for this budget, but it's not. Just that simple. Thank you.
Mrs. Shear.
So I'm just listening to all this, and there, I'm confused about a few things. Everyone keeps saying that we have a million dollars in cushion, and we could cut that, and it wouldn't affect the budget at all. I'm not seeing it, and I would have loved to discuss it with you over the past month or two, when the budget was presented to us. Everyone's sitting here saying, Mr. Moffett, you're wonderful. You do a great job, which you are. I agree with that. But I don't understand how we could sit here and say how wonderful he is and what a great job he did on the budget, yet in the same sentence, we're saying, but there's a cushion of a million dollars that should go and will not affect our schools in any way, shape, or form. Well, if the man's great at his job, which we all know he is, then he figured that million in there for a reason, and that's why it's there. And we're trusting him as our BA that it's being done properly. So again, I don't see where we could cut the million, and I don't think that we have time to discuss it, because nobody from the board has asked any questions about the budget since this has started. And if you have, you did it privately, even though we were given a document for this to be shared throughout the entire board. And I looked at that. There's no questions on it. So as far as I was concerned, nobody was concerned, and I'm assuming Mr. Moffett felt the same way, along with our superintendent. And I just wanted to point out to Mr. Pavlak. I am, you could tell me later, but I'm confused, because I'm looking at the agenda. I've looked it over. This is probably my fifth time now this week. I see we're, we're losing a school nurse, unfortunately, who makes a hundred and seven thousand. We're hiring someone for eighty-five thousand. We're moving a psychology teacher from, we're going from sixty-four to sixty-eight. So I'm, and if you count the number of retirees we have in this month alone, I'm not seeing where we're making up a million dollars in salary, especially since the teacher's contract is up. And quite frankly, we might not have budgeted for the amount of, the percentage that they're going to ask for, which I won't discuss because I'm conflicted. But I just, I just don't, it aggravates me to no avail that we are having this conversation right now, and that so many board members, after this wonderful man did a wonderful job and worked so hard, we're now going to reject his budget. Where's been all the discussion? It's not fair. That's not fair. That's, that's where I, and by the way, Mr. Bubba, the timeline that you're talking about, if you go back to last year, I believe that it was about May, maybe seventh or something, long the same dates, where we approved a budget, and then I believe it was the next board meeting, about two weeks later, May fourteenth, twenty-first, whatever it was, where we were given the numbers for healthcare. You've been on the board longer than I have, so you know that's how the timeline works, always. This, let's not pretend like this is new, and Mr. Moffett's doing a budget with numbers that we don't have, because we've never had them when we've approved a budget. So I'm just putting that out there. Mr. Moffett, again, you did a wonderful job. I will gladly support your budget. Thank you for working so hard. And as a taxpayer, I will pay what the schools need to be where they should be.
Okay. We're going to wrap this up. I'll make my comments and let Mr. Moffett have his say. I'm looking at the total increase, four point one million. So one point seven for FDK. That leaves two point four. And out of that, we are receiving one point four million increase to benefits. So that brings us down to half a million, or one million. Out of that one million, we have four bargaining units that are up for raises. That's eight hundred teachers. What are we suggesting? Zero. We are receiving new buses for our special needs students, curriculum supplies, one-to-one computers for the elementary grades. We also have unknowns. We have unknowns in every budget. We had tremendous losses last, this current budget. That was not included in the three-year kindergarten phase in, not to harp on kindergarten, because that's not what this is about. This budget is one large budget that encompasses many things that are necessary to run an excellent school district. People are scooping up houses in this town right now and having bidding wars. Not only do they want to move here because of our excellent school district, they're moving here because we're implementing that program. I think this is a fiscally sound budget. I think Mr. Moffett and his department worked very hard on it. I think our superintendent, who supports it, and himself a former BA, has gone over it with a fine-tooth comb and supports it. It puts us on a fiscally healthy path. We do need to make up for those losses, because once you reduce your general fund and you don't make up for it, there's a ripple effect year over year. We were not anticipating chapter forty-four. We were not anticipating not running the K-RAP program for a year, because that was part of the revenue that was going to go to full-day kindergarten and pay for furnishings, et cetera. There's a lot more to the story. So at the end of the day, four point one million increase, and all of what we're getting is wonderful and well-done. And I will be happily supporting it. And, Mr. Moffett, I yield to you.
Yeah, I just feel obligated at this point, just a back-and-forth discussion, is, is the concept of potentially delaying the vote. I, I need, I feel obligated to address that. Right now, we need to address this issue tonight. You don't have an opportunity to push it off into the future. I've checked code statute. I reviewed the election calendar, which is, or have been provided. You, you really have to address it tonight. The county office, if you fail to, the county office will inherit the budget, and it will be deemed, and I'll, I'll use their quote. Defiling the hearing is effectively refusing to meet the statutory obligation you, you have tonight. Although you have some statutory timelines, that does not really address tonight's vote. It, it has to do with any type of a published advertised budget to the general public at the hearing. Any type of changes needed to be discussed tonight. There's no really opportunity to push it off. So I just wanted just to caution the board that they're going to have to really make a decision tonight to either accept or not to adopt tonight's budget, so that we can move forward. I am definitely can ask, answer some questions if there's some follow-up on the legality of it, and I'm sure Mr. Gepper can weigh in as well.
Okay. I think all the questions have been asked, and the statements have been Okay. I think all the questions have been asked and the statements have been made. Am I incorrect? Okay. Mr. Geppert, at this time, if you could read the revisions into the, revisions on tonight's agenda.
Mr. Moffett.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Geppert. Mr. Moffett.
I'll read the revisions to the agenda.
What did you want to say, Dr. Tobek? I'm sorry. Did you want to weigh in?
No, no.
It's just simply that, it's Mr. Geppert to read the revisions.
Did I say Mr. Geppert instead of Mr. Moffett?
That's what I said, I was just.
I'm sure you meant Mr. Moffett.
I did. Mr. Geppert, please don't read the revisions. Mr. Moffett, kindly read the revisions. Thank you.
Yes. We have a few tonight. The first one, we'll be filling in some missing information on the PWS Item O section, which is the School Resource Finance. And that is under O-10, which is health insurance. So that's PWS item roll into next, next meeting. And that amount will be awarded, that meaning, I'll actually just read the resolution. It says, "Resolve that the Board, the Board approved the Superintendent's and Business Administrator's recommendation as negotiated by Brown and Brown Benefit Advisors. Approved the award of an extraordinary unspecific service contract for RFP number 1-2022 to Aetna for health and prescription benefits for the 2022 school year at a composite renewal rate reflecting an increase of 4.69." Oh, 11 is also a revision, we'll be adding information to that as well. It says, "Resolve that the Board of Education approved the Superintendent and Business Administrator's recommendation as negotiated by Brown and Brown Benefit Advisors. Approved the award to Dental Dental for dental benefits for the 2122 school year." Moving on, we have under emergent, under T, emergent human resources. Item number two should be revised under number eight, which is to approve, approval of chaperones for GW. We will be removing numbers 10, 14, 16, 40, and 42. On number 20, approval of chaperones for Wayne Hills will remove number 16. Again, those are on the attachments. Appointment of district staff revised number one is Giuseppe Tandrell. I'll spell that, T-A-N-D-U-R-E-L-L-A. Groundskeeper revised salary from step number four, which is $49,550 to step number five, which is $51,385. We also are adding number T to that section. Under T, we, T-12, approval of sabbatical. And that reads as follows. Resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, approves for the 2122 school year, a full-year sabbatical for Evan Saperstein, social studies teacher at Wayne Hills High School for completion of postdoctoral fellowship in didactics, history, and education at the University of Montreal, effective September 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022, at half-pay with benefits as per WA contract. And that concludes the revisions to tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. All right. Do we have any committee reports this evening? Mrs. Kumar.
Tonight, the Education Committee met. Due to the worldwide pandemic, the Education Committee of the Wayne Township Board of Education took place in person and during a Google Meet. It started at approximately 5:00 on May 6, 2021. The meeting adhered to the agenda and began with an overview of minutes from the April 8 meeting. In attendance were myself, Eileen Albanese, and Matt Giordano, along with our administrator, Donna Reichman. We discussed the, a book review on Dr. Seuss, along with possibilities of exchange students and a middle school calendar change. That concludes my report.
Mr. Bubba.
Technology met tonight with Dr. Richard, Mr. Duffy, and myself. It was a brief meeting where we went over, the department is reviewing their subscription services. So they're trying to review and make sure that they're utilizing all the subscriptions that we have when it comes to learning and making sure that we're actually not, not using services that we're, or paying for services that we're really not using. Dr. Richard met with the Wayne Hills admin team as they're reviewing a proposal for a unified esports lab. And they wanted to see how the technology department can help support the program, which I think is a great thing. The summer projects we talked about, a continuation of the iPhone, or not the iPhone, the phone projects where we're upgrading two more schools this summer. Their new interactive boards going in some classrooms and two labs that will be updated at the high schools this summer. And then we also talked about the, are demoing a learning management system that they did a small-scale demo and they are looking to do a larger-scale demo. And they are also looking for new content filtering for the web. And that is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Bubba. Anyone else? It's getting toward the end of the year, not all the committees met. I made a mistake. I should have gone to public before committee reports, but we'll get there now. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under Old Business. Can I get a mover?
I'll move.
Mr. Giordano, Mr., I'm sorry, Mrs. Kumar. I'm sorry, Mr. Duffy. Okay. I don't see any hands raised. Oh, we have one.
Hello.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Conklin from 272 Mohawk Trail. I'm calling as a parent and a power professional at our Preakness EEC Center. Sorry, I'm very nervous. I just had a question, clarification on the playgrounds. I'm not sure if I understood that they're gonna be opened, but only for after-school use? And my concern is our preschoolers really need our playground. I'm, I believe the CDC guidelines on contact transmission of COVID have eliminated that as a concern. And I don't think we, our children, well, I believe our children need our playgrounds. We're in the ECC, the gym is very small, it's hot. We need the fresh air. We're looking out the window at a brand-new playground that we can't use. And it's breaking our hearts to not be able to use it. And it's fenced in, it's safe. So using the fields is dangerous for our little ones. Worrying about them running into the parking lot. To me, not opening the playgrounds is so detrimental to our, our children. And I would really like to see if you could reconsider that the playgrounds to schoolchildren rather than after-school use. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Can I, oh, it's another one.
Hi, this is Jenny Franklin, 21 Kuzana Drive. I would, did not intend to call in tonight, but I, listening to you all discuss the budget, I would just like to say, as a parent whose last child is leaving the district in a few weeks, please vote for the budget. The kids have had a really bad year. And anything that could be done to make next year better, the best year they've ever had. And if money can be thrown at that problem, $24 a household, I think that's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam President, seeing no more hand raised, I move to close. Mrs. Share, second. Mrs. Putta. Okay. Back to the agenda. Can I get a mover for the next item?
I'll move.
Mr. Duffy. Are we moving individual items or are we moving the agenda?
I make a motion, move the agenda.
Okay. Mr. Duffy.
Second.
Mrs. Share. Discussion. Anyone? Guess we've had enough of that. Roll call, Mr. Moffett.
Mr. Duffy? In this town, yes. Mr. Giordano?
Uh, let's see if I can find the right one here. With regards to emergent T number three, name number five, the answer is no. We are voting on the budget also correct?
That's correct.
The answer is no, yes to the rest.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes, as a parent and a former teacher, yes to all items.
Mr. Pavlak?
No to the budget. And as I stand behind my comments that I made, the cut in the budget would, would affect nothing. Every student would continue to get everything they get. And under emergent HR number three, name number five, no. Everything else, yes.
Mrs. Putta?
I am voting yes to everything.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes to everything.
Mrs. Albanese?
Under emergent T on the administrative list number three, I'm voting no to name number five. And on emergent V, which is the budget, I'm gonna vote no, and yes to everything else.
Mr. Bubba?
An emergent T, number three, name five, no. And emergent V, number two, no, yes to the rest.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes. To everything.
Motion carries.
Very good. Okay. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under Old Business. Can I get a mover?
Over.
Mrs. Share, Mr. Giordano. Anybody?
Madam President, seeing no one, I move to close. Second.
Mr. Pavlak, seconded by Mr. Giordano. Okay. Well, here we are at the end. Old business. Mr. Dr. Tobek, you'd like to answer the question?
A lot of times when I do my administrative reports, I don't necessarily include every detail. But the ECC will definitely have the playgrounds open during the day because part of the program there is play therapy. And we've been just as excited about the employees who work there. So Mrs. Hammond is gonna be making an announcement tomorrow. Also, Mrs. Fode will also be making an announcement for Ryerson. Those playgrounds will also be open because, again, those programs, the playgrounds there are part of play therapy program. And if I could just, I could quick comment. So board members, I know there was some debate about the budget this evening. And some strong feelings emerged, but there's a reason to be proud regardless of where you stand on the budget. After many, many years of debate, Wayne will have full-day kindergarten. It is a historic day for the community and something that will have a positive influence every year moving forward. With that, I would also like to consider, as we move ahead with the budget, the implementation of budget, there are many ways to provide taxpayer relief. So if there is a scenario where there happens to be excess in the budget, there are ways to surspurt, to budget excess surplus. There's ways to budget taxpayer relief in the form of moving ahead with facility projects without asking for additional taxpayer funds. So there are many opportunities for the Board to address perhaps some of the issues that were expressed tonight.
Are you finished? Thank you, Dr. Tobek. Okay. New business. Board member comments. Mrs. Share?
I just want to take a moment to thank all the teachers. It is Teacher Appreciation Week. And I know most teachers are used to getting like food and goodies and unfortunately, that can't be done this year. But I want to let you know that you are very much appreciated. You are almost done with a very difficult year of teaching. And let's all just keep our fingers crossed for a great year next year and plenty of treats for teacher appreciation. Take care.
Anyone else? Mr. Pavlak?
Just, just a thank you to our teachers. You know, when COVID shut us down a year ago in the classroom, our teachers, as usual, rose to the challenge and to continue to teach and support our students. On a week's notice, if not even that, you had to scramble and out of your classroom, into your house, and come up and reimagine everything that you were going to do in the classroom, which is tough. And I thank each and every one of you for that. And to our nurses, thank you. You've been through the middle of this as well. In the buildings, most of the time, when, you know, people have been working remotely, just to face the challenges and to help the parents, help the kids, and everyone. And thank you for being so stellar. And we do really appreciate each and every one of you. Thank you.
Mrs. Putta?
I would like to add my thanks to those of my fellow board members, to the nurses, to the teachers. But teaching doesn't end with the teachers, we know that. It's the paras. It's the parents who care. There's an old saying, it takes a village, well, it really has the last year and a half. So thank you very much. Thank you, Jenny Franklin, for calling in and supporting our budget. Have a good evening.
Mrs. Kumar?
I just want to say a quick thank you to the teachers and to the nurses. The nurses and the teachers both did their own things to go above and beyond this year, whether it was the nurses volunteering to help with COVID testing or vaccines. And the teachers doing other work outside of what they had to do, those teachers who did decide to go beyond.
Anyone else? Mr. Duffy?
Yes, reiterate, all my fellow colleagues, want to thank all the teachers. Special shout-out to all my teachers through my years in school that held my hand and got me through. Especially those nurses that actually believed when I had a tummy ache to go home. I appreciate them as well. So thank you all. Especially those nurses that actually believed when I had a tummy ache to go home. I appreciate them as well. So thank you all.
They believed you, Sean? Mr. Giordano?
Thank you very much. With regards to teacher appreciation, I could stand here and rattle off Mrs. Seabright, Ms. Rokus, Ms. Waddell, Ms. Goodman, Ms. Osinski, Mr. New, Ms. Newtall, Mr. Stanton. I could rattle off my Ms. Pellman, Mr. Iomonte, and roll through names off the top of my heads of all the teachers I had many, many years ago. I'm in my 50s now and I could still remember them. And I think every person in this room remembers one or more teachers that really molded their lives. And to tell all your teachers right there, you may not realize it, even though you're on a camera and you're staring at a blank picture, or somebody racing across the screen holding their cat, or all the crazy things that happened to you this year, understand that you make a difference every single morning. You get up and go into that classroom, whether it's virtual, hybrid, or it's full, no matter where you are in the state here. Thank you very much for your services. You are all true heroes. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay, time for my wrap-up. I want to start by congratulating the valedictorian and salutatorians, and especially our student representative, Gina. I can't say that I'm surprised. Just, just the presentation you gave last year that blew us all away on your trip to Russia told me there were good things coming for you. The teachers, as Mr. Giordano said and everyone else, who doesn't remember their teachers, the ones that really molded them? None of us have gotten anywhere in life without teachers. We appreciate you. We thank you. We value you. And we look forward to a great upcoming year with this new budget. Thank you to everyone who approved it. And I can't say enough about this monumental occasion. Wayne School District is finally going to lose the distinction of being the last one in Passaic County to offer full-day kindergarten. This is a long time coming, highly necessary for so many reasons. We don't even follow the core standards, which require full-day kindergarten before first grade, where we're starting our kids off at a disadvantage with half-day. Obviously, the K-Rap was wonderful. Unfortunately, we couldn't run it last year, but we're going to more than make up for that in September. And I'm, I'm looking forward to the opening of that program. I will be there with bells on. So thank you to everyone and have a good night. Move to close?
I'll move. Thank you, everyone. Great night.
Mr. Duffy, Mrs. Putta?